Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome back. It's been awhile. Barb sent out the meeting minutes. Our last meeting was January seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, where we had the preliminary site plan for eighty seventy-nine Clinton Street Road. What?
Eighty ninety-seven.
Eighty ninety-seven. It's been so long, I can't remember the address. Here comes Vicky. Eighty ninety-seven. So, yeah, that is dead in the water, I believe, at this point. I think they're trying to figure out what they're gonna do on that. But, hi Vicky.
Hello.
So, yeah. Everybody have a chance to look at the meeting minutes? Do I have a motion to approve? David, second?
I'll second.
John, all in favor? Alright. Yeah, I don't know if Gina's still working with it or not, actually. Somebody had contacted Gary about a new direction with parking and driveways, and we haven't heard anything yet from them, so. I don't know where that stands, where... I don't think they were happy with the DOT.
Yeah, what was the issue that ultimately...
They did not like the curb cuts that the DOT
Okay.
had recommended.
What did they recommend? Do you know?
Yes, I do. They told them that they needed to close the curb cut closest to the light, because it's unsafe. And their curb cut where the Dunkin', X it is, needs to be thirty feet. It was not, it's too big, it's not to their standards. And so, closing both of those would not allow a tractor-trailer into the property off of Route thirty-three. They would be able to get onto the property on Route nineteen, but on Route thirty-three, they couldn't get on to the property. And the owner did not like that, and the architect didn't like it. So, we actually met up there and discussed moving the curb cut to the middle, so that you could have an entrance and an exit, and then you could have your tractor-trailers make the swing into the property. But, they didn't like that either, and they went back and forth with DOT, which I was not privy to many of the contacts. I talked to Zach once. They definitely wanted it closed, the one closed, and they definitely wanted it smaller by Dunkin'. They didn't care where it was, as long as it was X amount of feet away from the light. They didn't care where it was. So, that ultimately was what killed the project.
Really?
Yes.
So, it's...
It's as far as I know. I never heard back from them, and somebody reached out to Gary, a completely different person, our code officer, about some things up there, what they could do, and they said, he told them to come into the office, and they never did. So, I don't know. I think that unfortunately, the project is not moving forward at this point in the capacity that it was, so. So, unfortunate, because it was a great project.
Yeah, it was.
But, the DOT would've had to seen it regardless, so better to know on the front end versus the back end. So, that's where that stands. We do have new business. It's very exciting. We have a signed permit application for eighty seventy-three Clinton Street Road. It's permit number zero-one dash twenty twenty-four. It is for the Dunkin' portion, Dunkin' Donuts portion of the business.
Just Dunkin'.
Well, it's Dunkin' Donuts now, then it will be Dunkin'. So, they're just replacing the verbiage, but our law does require that they do come. We did look it over and discuss it with them. The applicant is not here today, which is fine. I discussed it on the phone. They are simply just changing out
Existing signs.
Existing signs. To read Dunkin', not Dunkin'. And then they're updating their cup.
Yes, I saw that, sorry.
More modern, I guess.
I like the updated cup.
I like, I like the updated cup too. I don't know why they dropped the donuts.
I know.
Does anyone know?
Because they're more than just donuts.
Is that what, is that why?
That's my whole thought, they're, you know.
Yeah, I think it's just like fashion.
It's fashionable.
Sort of comes down to that.
Right.
It's like one word, that you fucking...
Yeah.
Instead of... The long time business that everybody knows.
Exactly. Just a couple notes. This is in the general, or commercial general, general commercial. So, they can have illuminated inside.
But they do state on the application that it will be externally lit.
Oh, do they?
The use of, will the sign use electric to be externally illuminated? They put yes.
Oh, okay. Yes, because this, this actually, the sign permit probably should have a little section that says, for general commercial, for the two parcels. So, it will be internally lit. It is just a swap-out. Originally, they couldn't have an internally lit sign.
Right, yeah, that was one of my questions. I wanted to make sure it was in here.
Yes, it is. They changed, the board changed it, which I think is the way to go for that. Because they wouldn't have been able to do this, actually. So, does anybody have any questions?
Well, it was internally lit. It is currently internally lit.
It is, but if they replaced it with the old sign law, they could not have an internally lit.
Right.
Which is one of the reasons that the board did agree to change that.
And this is the only part of town that allows for that?
Yep. Yep. General commercial. I think there's two parcels. I need the red.
Yeah.
Three parcels.
I think it's all, I think it's all by the light, right?
Yeah, the new auto body, or the new...
Right, the car shop.
Yeah.
There is lit too.
Yep, it's allowed to be lit. Conti, couldn't think of the name of it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Barb.
That looks like he's doing business.
Yes, it looks like he's doing business. Alright. Does anyone have any questions? No? I will give Vicky unquestioned voting rights today, because we are minus Kate. Official voting rights, so. Do I have a motion to approve the sign permit?
Subdued.
Vicky, second?
I will.
Carol, all in favor?
I am.
Alright. I will let them know tomorrow. Just for the record too, we'll put this in our minutes, we do have a letter from the homeowner, the business parcel owner.
What do they find out doing the work? Did they say?
He didn't. He wants to do it soon, though. He wants to... He's dealing with thirteen different municipalities and thirteen different rules. He just wants to get it completed, because everyone's different, of course. So, he's the problem. I don't blame him. Alright. So, other news, other happenings. Stay quiet. Stay quiet, really.
What's going on? You doing the pulls of Virgin?
Well, as far as the village board and the village, we just got done microsealing the three streets in Virgin. They look great.
Is Moncker not getting done?
Not this year.
I thought it was on the list.
I don't know.
I don't think it was.
There was talk, but I think that there's gonna, they're gonna look at Moncker Street.
Yeah, I think there's some concerns with locations of drainage, the drainage
Yes, there are.
along the curbing there. So, I think that's gonna be looked at before any further...
Yeah.
Works.
Had something to do with it, but I know that there was talk that they didn't want to microseal it and then have to do something bigger to do it. Yeah, it's nice. The roads look nice. They did a nice job. They did a nice job. So, that's happening. Lots of work up at the park. The park committee's been busy.
When are the lights going in? I saw it, but I don't remember.
Soon. Well, actually, we haven't ordered the actual light part yet. Right now, they're doing the underground. Todd was with us when we went around the park and placed where we're gonna actually put the lights. So, they're digging like the hole, whatever they're called. What are they called?
They'll put them in the conduits.
The conduits, and then, then the little spots for them to go in. Whatever those, it's very technical. The holes. There's like a hand hole, I don't know. But, they're doing, working on that. They're working at the back part of the park first, and then they put the transformers in already. So, they're busy. They've worked, they've gotten a lot of work done in the last two days, actually.
I didn't realize that those transformers were gonna be, like, basically down in the ground.
I hope that that is the case. I thought they were bigger.
Yeah, the one that's closest to the bathroom, I mean, I don't think it sticks up out of the ground, or...
Is that all the, is that gonna be taller?
Unless that's just the base.
I think it might just be the base.
Okay.
I think they're gonna be smaller than the big one, but I think they're gonna be bigger than that.
Now, that makes sense then.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is there a new layout for the lighting? Did you email that to us?
Um, did I email it? Do you? I will go get it, and I have it.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, I have it. I'll go get it. So, yeah, that's, that's happening. Anything else, Todd? The substation? I don't know where that's at.
I, I know that there's gonna be quite a weight on some of the materials for it that they had to order. It's gonna be interesting, because with Oxbow, they want it to be up and running in thirteen months, and they haven't even broke ground yet, and if that happens and the substation's not ready to deliver that much more electricity, it could be interesting.
Oops.
Yeah, so the poles, we went and looked at the poles. They repainted all the poles that we bought. One of the reasons we can get it going a little earlier is we were able to buy at auction the poles from Arcade, or one of the...
Yeah, Arcade.
Akron.
Arcade.
From Arcade, they had them on auction, twenty-three of them, and we needed twenty-one.
Perfect.
So, they repainted those, and those are all ready to go.
Yeah, they'd save thousands of dollars.
Yeah, it was like, gonna be around twenty thousand, and I think we got them for thirteen hundred or something, fifteen hundred.
Wow, nice.
Yeah. And then we had a sample light here from one, we're looking at two different vendors. We had a sample light, and they put it up at Ward Park. Todd saw it. It's nice. It's nice, and then there, another guy's coming this week, apparently to Holly, and bringing a couple samples too.
You wanna put them down there too?
I think so. He left the light off.
Yeah, he did.
Nick did, so, in case we want to put it up, or put it, the other one back up. So. So, here's the layout. I'll pass this around. All the little yellow spots are where the lights are gonna go, and where it's orange, they're going now on the outside of the track versus the inside. Yes. Because we went over there and looked and felt like, with all of the events over there, and park days and everything, that there is a very large possibility that they could be backed into. We started with actually one that was at the very end. We thought for sure that somebody would back into that.
Especially by that, the driveway over on Park.
Yes.
So, it's going this way, over here, and not, not over here?
Right, so, this is just hopping over.
Okay.
It's just hopping over to the other side.
Yeah.
So, these seven will be on the outside of the track.
Yeah, that's where they put garcotties and...
Everything.
That's where people park in the grass, when they have the light back there, too.
And also, the more we've sat with the plans, we've thought more about leaving them... Originally, we wanted the gazebo in the middle of the track.
Right.
Where the softball field used to be, and then, the more we thought about it, we thought it's nice to have the nice green space there, when you're walking. I mean, then it starts to get cluttered and crowded, so we're trying to keep things out of the middle of the track, and kind of still leave it parkish.
Right, well, there's kids that play in there.
Yeah, which is why we went to doing the gazebo, replacing the back pavilion and putting the gazebo there, so that the entertainment, because the concerts were really popular, so that the entertainment space was better. And the grant writer really liked that, actually. The Labella grant writer said, "That's fantastic, because that goes really great in the grant." And it's hard to see, like, if anybody went to any of the concerts, like, I feel like when you're looking at it, because they're up, like, their heads are here. I mean, it comes right, the pavilion's so low.
The pavilion is low.
As opposed to being bigger and maybe a little more grand.
Sounds like gazebo, I mean, sometimes they're raised.
Right.
Yes, they're, they're bigger, and it's gonna be a two-tier. If we get the grant, it's a two-tier, so they'll be like...
Is it gonna be the same size, is that?
It has to be, actually. We can't disturb, it has to be the same footprint or close to it, because we would have to do all sorts of archaeological excavating, and we didn't want to get into that, yes. It's actually, it's actually considered historic, because it's over forty years old.
Well, it is. I mean, there's a picture back here of the park.
It's historic.
It looks exactly the same, the roadway.
Yeah. So, if we keep it the same footprint, then we alleviate having to do that type of thing.
Okay.
So, it will be a very similar footprint. Maybe a different shape, but same...
More of a footprint.
Yeah. Same general area.
Right.
Yep. So, the grant we wrote has that, and picnic tables, new picnic tables. And then we were also able to put all the colonial lighting in the grant, even though we had purchased some of the materials already.
Okay.
So, that's happening. It's gonna be really nice. That's happening. And obviously, I don't know if you've driven up nineteen, but Oxbow broke ground.
They did.
Yes, they broke ground on Monday. So, they're moving ahead, and on Monday, our utilities, Electric and Sewer, met with Dollar General up at the site. That got approved. I have a picture of what the final... It doesn't really do it justice, the schematic, but this is the final Dollar General. This is actually, the tan's actually brick. It doesn't read very well on here. That's what it's gonna look like.
Oh, the lot that's there?
Well, and was this the final? Because I know when I was at the public meeting, there were a lot of different pictures.
No, she sent it to me. Yeah. That's the final on it.
That's not in the village, though, right?
No.
That's why it was before the town planning board.
Yes. Did you see it, Todd?
Yes, I have, I've seen it.
When do they think it will be done?
I think they...
I mean, because they work really fast.
Yeah, I mean, they want it in November. I don't know if that'll happen, but...
Wow.
They wanted to, she told me at the meeting, she wanted the doors open in November. I don't know if...
She built one of ours, like I asked.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's not very much time.
But, I think that it's just, I think it's a machine, like, I mean, they just go from one to the... This guy was out somewhere, three hours away, building one, when he came to meet with our guys. So, they had, I guess they had a good meeting.
I didn't get a chance to go to that one. Is the parking lot in the back?
It's on the side.
On the side?
So, it's, it's facing thirty-three, but also facing Liberty.
But, oh, facing Liberty, not seven eleven.
And the parking lot's facing Liberty.
Okay.
And behind it is more parking.
Okay.
So, the corner faces...
But, faces the road and Liberty.
Okay.
Yeah. So, you come, you drive, like, you're going into Liberty, and it'll be on your left. You pull in on your left, and that's the parking, it's sort of the front, but not really. It's the corner.
Right. Okay.
They are not allowed to put anything outside. That's the other thing. They're not allowed to put, you know, coolers, or tarpaulin, or any of that. I think Byron also did that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember seeing anything outside there.
Nothing on the exterior.
I can't remember. You do at Churchville all the time.
Yes. It had to be...
That was awful.
Yep. Dollar General said at the meeting that they would respect that, as long as it was in... Like, that had to be a condition.
Yeah.
Written into the site plan, which they did. So, so that's, that's happening. And houses are just selling.
What's going into the storefront to over? You know, these, like, flowers in the window.
Nothing. There, nothing's going in there. They're just...
Oh, they just put flowers and paint it in?
Yeah. Yeah. Joe talked to them about painting it. So, he painted it.
That's too bad.
Joe, Joe did offer to paint it, actually. Yeah. The second time he offered to paint it. So, yeah, nothing.
That's true.
It is. It is. I don't know. What else is going on?
And that carpet place, is that ever coming in?
See, there's stuff inside.
There, there's been stuff and samples in there for...
I've seen people in there, but I don't know.
They had also bought the house on the corner of McKenzie and nineteen, and they just closed it.
Yeah, did they?
I guess they didn't like Virgin.
They weren't, they weren't living there, so.
It's a rental.
Right, it was rental.
Yeah.
Why'd they buy it? Who knows?
I did...
Wait for a couple of years, too.
It was only a couple of years.
It was only a couple of years.
Two or three, maybe. I know, Todd, I noticed that. I did notice when I was walking today that there are steel beams at Stumphenge.
I saw them yesterday.
They've been there for about a month now.
They have?
I saw them, and I was like, am I imagining that, or are those new? Sometimes something...
They're just storing them there.
Right, something random will show up there and then leave again.
Well, I had hoped that maybe something was happening, but if they've been there for a month...
Yeah, they just, I walk by there every morning, so.
Right.
Showed up one day, and they don't look long enough to
I know.
put a cross, like, if they were gonna
Yeah.
go through the foundation and support the structure with it. They're not long enough for that.
Yeah.
So, I don't know
Yeah.
what they're doing.
I don't know.
I hope more things don't start accumulating there.
The three trucks and what else?
Yeah.
The trucks. It was such a beautiful house.
I know. It really was.
From what I understand, it's packed full of just junk and crap.
Really?
Well, then it'll all be in the basement soon enough.
The upper windows are wide open. I can only imagine what's living in there.
Oh, I know.
It's like the house next to me. That's how that was for years.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. That's true.
It's a shame.
Yeah, I, I don't, there's really not much else happening. Anything from the board, Todd?
Just, you know, like, you're waiting for your grant, we're waiting for the, hopefully to hear something on the grant for the electrical
Alright, for the substation.
That'll be huge.
Yeah. That will be.
When do you expect to hear from, on the grant for the park?
Well, last year, we heard around Thanksgiving, but Joe called Labella, and they said January this year. So, January.
It all takes time, doesn't it?
It does. It does. The park committee's also working on a possible resurrecting the farmer's market. Yeah. So, you get your survey, in October, fill out your survey.
Oh, whether you want a farmer's market, like a pop-up farmer's market?
Uh, we're not sure. We're just kinda talking about it again.
We want to know what people want, if it's even worth pursuing.
Right.
I gotta say, I don't think so.
Yeah, you were...
I mean, tried to have a farmer's market there for like, three years. This is, you know, so many people have their own gardens in the village. And they just, they really don't need a farmer's market. And I don't think that, I think you'd have trouble getting vendors, because I'm sure that we're, the community is, that's a waste of your time.
Yeah.
I mean, when they tried to do it the last year, which I was opposed to, they couldn't get vendors. Because it just wasn't popping.
Right.
So, I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know what's changed since then, you know?
Yeah, I don't know if the climate's changed out there, where more people want, you know, table to farm a table.
Yeah, but you can get it other places.
Right.
Is the thing. It's not like it's hard to find.
Right.
You know, there's a lot of farmer's markets around.
Yeah. So, Steve, fill out your survey. Tell us. Your survey. That'll be going out in October. That'll be going out in October. We more than likely, I don't know if there'll be any business next month, but more than likely, we will have business in November. The village bought some land on Gibson Place, by the substation, and it will need to be subdivided off. We're gonna, we're gonna buy a portion, and it needs to be subdivided. So, it'll need to come here for a, we'll have to classify it. It will more than likely be a minor subdivision, and then we'll have to have the hearing, so.
What are we gonna do? What are you doing with that, everything?
Uh, just having it for access.
Okay.
So, that property over there is sold.
Okay.
And so, we bought some property on one side of it, so we would have access, especially with the new substation going in, and then we wanted some more access, so he's agreed to subdivide off, and we're gonna purchase the stuff close to the substation, so that they can get in and do that and work on things, and have good access.
It's kind of tight in there.
It's very agreeable to doing that, apparently, so we will get the subdivision. So, November and December, probably, we'll have the subdivision preliminary plan and then the final. So, that's on the horizon. Courtney doesn't think it'll get surveyed before, in time for October, October meeting. So, yeah. Anybody else have anything? Questions that you're dying to have answered?
Quigley's, what's your status now?
Nothing.
Which?
Quigley's. And the town across from the pavilion gift?
Oh, right, right, right.
On hold for money? Is what they said at town planning board? We'll keep you posted. I wish more people went to the Dollar General and the Oxbow planning board meetings, town planning board meetings. I mean, Vicky went to the last one. But, I mean, just generally, the public was kind of stirred up about the Dollar General, and nobody went, really.
Right.
Well, I mean, for one thing, it seemed like a done deal.
But it wasn't. I mean, the exterior wasn't. I mean, I think the Dollar General was a done deal.
Right, I think that's why. I don't think, I think that's what people were stirred up. They just thought it was kind of stupid.
But they still, they still could voice their opinion on it.
Well, we got a better looking Dollar General.
We did, we did get a better looking Dollar General.
Oh, yeah.
Than they had originally, I mean, we were getting Churchville. That was, that was, that was the schematic.
So, that's good.
Yeah. And there are things that you...
They take better care of the ground, like.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure they will. I'm sure they will. They have forty spots, forty spots, that they've gotta take care of.
So, the traffic situation, the DOT's good with not having light there?
Well, yeah, I think did the...
I was asking about that, too.
Yeah, we, I think everybody was concerned about the traffic, and...
They're looking into reducing the speed limit.
Oh, like that limit?
Right up to the expressway.
Reduce the...
People pay attention to that, right?
Yeah, I don't think that light is in...
No, there was no mention of a traffic law.
No.
It's dangerous now. I can't imagine.
Yes.
Restore it.
If Quigley's goes in, it could be a different situation.
That's true.
But, yeah. We'll see. But that village and the town both had to do something for that. Pass, I think, did the town have to do something? They had to pass a resolution. I think the village had to as well.
Yeah.
Yes.
Have a resolution.
To have like, a study done?[1712.38]